For the betterment of the town of Cobalt and its people, I call this meeting order 6:30. Disclosure of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. None? Public meetings? Deputations and delegations, Maria Story from Story Environmental. Maria, would you like to come and take a seat?
I just have a short presentation I'll go through. Thank you. So, I'm here today to talk about the constructed wetland. I have an idea I'd like to talk about that. So for those of you who aren't familiar with the Cobalt constructed wetland, or maybe haven't been there for a while, I just wanted to review different parts of the wetland. Almost shows up there, but on the bottom, do you mind if I approach?
We have another cell that wasn't built up. Where would that be on? No, 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 that's fine.
Just the area surrounding the Cobalt constructed wetland. It's just important because of the long history of other activity in the area. You can see in Crosswise Lake. Sorry, I should have a pointer. Can I come up here?
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
So, I wanted to explain that this is Cobalt Lake. Cobalt Lake is discharged. And it has continued to evolve. Was constructed in 2000 and it started to reach the In 2000, the Ministry of the Environment issued an experimental certificate of approval of wetlands, which then expired in 2006. Because it had expired. So, in that certificate of approval, there were certain excellent limits that had to be met.
I said that we started receiving sewage in 2001. Where was the switch point before 2001?
It was just going into that same valley, but the wetland. Yeah, so the wetland wasn't there, but it was just being discharged. So, just click one more time. So, in 2008, because the ministry issued they wanted an assessment. They wanted us to tell them what operating to meet the excellent limits. And then from 2008 to 2011, we conducted trials. We implemented and we also did some nearest I submitted an environmental there are two months the wetland just doesn't quite warm as well as it needs to. But for the rest of the months, it performs exceedingly well. So, we are, we were under the old scale allowed 580 but in January and February, we were discharged eight So what I had done is just shifting, shifted the loadings a little bit, but reduced the overall loadings a lot. And the ministry said, we can't do that. So they denied the application. And that was at the same time that other municipalities in Northern Ontario were operating with the limits, which are much less Mayor Sartor Rachel wrote a letter to the Ministry of Environment asking so in 2017, she said, you know, we really want you to because you don't see it with your eyes. So she really wanted to get the ministry to see the wetland. She wrote a letter. This was just under this, she wrote. She basically said Cobalt constructed wetland is tremendous economic must be Cobalt wetland and an update Um. In March 2018, we wasn't it was just, we were primarily trying to convince the ministry that this was good technology. On March 2018, this town received an inspector's report issued by the Ministry of Environment. Basically, they wanted a plan to bring a valid environmental and prepared an updated plan. We sent it to the ministry in 2018. But then, there wasn't much progress made. I think shortly after that staff, staff changes and just didn't get. And then there was another ministry inspection completed in 2019. Then in January 2020, Mayor to present the concept they were doing. And so he did attend the meeting. He sat, listened to what he had to say. Again, we didn't hear anything. Basically, both the after carefully reviewing this order, Tom Cobalt and Story Environmental, we requested a review of many of the conditions, since one of the conditions that was in the order, they wanted us to replace all the boughs and repair them all. So if you can imagine, when it's that wetland now, it's all these boughs out and replaced it, how much damage that will do. So we said, you know, we don't want to do this. And they agreed. But there are many conditions within that order that were it was basically reissued in January 2020 by Ray Hall. The other important point I want to make in this is when John Hodgson, I helped to author the response, but he added a very important paragraph in the bottom of the letter. Where he basically commented on his disappointment regarding the body language officer that had been assigned to the file from the ministry's perspective. And the reason why I'm pointing this out is it was really obvious to us in that meeting that they were not wanting to cooperate. Every time I said something, they were rolling their eyes. And anyways, I'm just really happy that I did that at the bottom of this letter because he basically cited citing towns for human rights because they were so inappropriate. So was offered in the wetland it's for environmental basically basically what I'm studying right now is Sauter Kinnick Creek and what it can simulate, what it can what it, what it can discharge without causing adverse effects. That's what we're currently establishing. And then once we've done that, we work backwards and we set up excellent limits. That want everyone to understand how well the wetland has. So these criterion are concentration. How much how much oxygen is consumed by the bacteria to eat up the contaminants. These have been stated on one any of these.
Repeat the acronyms. And then was total
There are other smaller Northern Ontario facilities. Mechanical, like, so they would be consistent pretty much throughout the year, whereas we have, like, seasonal differences.
So, you can get to that because there are so many other advantages. So let me carry on to the next slide. And you'll see that, so these are all graphs from 2016, actually 2006 to 2021. And what these show is with time, how things have improved. So, up here, we have a percentage that these are average annual average excellent So, if you remember, the VOT limit was 25. On an annual average basis, you can see this is continuing to drop. So, 2016 and in 2020, we were but that's on an annual average basis. But they want, they want us to they don't care that, you know, January, February, we have a more difficult time meeting the 25 and easily meeting at well below it. They're not giving us that still it's not quite steep.
Can you explain what exactly that is?
Fosters is a nutrient. When in the summer, I don't know if you've ever noticed so phosphorus is it's also detergent soap. I haven't done much, yes, but I believe that the primary source of So, when it gets green, it's because of the phosphorus. It's too much phosphorus. Okay, so it basically supports algae, algal growth. Okay, but it's a nutrient for algae. So, what this is forms of wetland has continued to improve. In fact, even we don't have 2028. So these are the loading. So in addition to the concentration, we also have to calculate the kilograms discharged. And these were the loading objectives. So, in January, we were allowed to discharge wetlands. The wetland starts to take April and May. Environment So we're we start what's at the limits? Go to the next slide. These are the percentage of those total limits on an annual happened in 2014, 2015. Oh, 2014, so there was a you'll see
curious that it's fire changes, right? What is it that's impacting it?
But depends on the year. If it's a colder winter, it's sooner in the fall. Sometimes it has to be summer. If it's closed moving forward. If you have to comply with the order. And regardless of doing the, in the past, the study, as I said, that was for that has to be done. And I'm not sure yet what's in the capacity sites need to tell me because I haven't but I do have an idea that I want to discuss. Regardless of the outcome, you I'm opposing a research. The town of Cobalt and Story Environmental have been battling with the Ministry of Environment to convince them that the Cobalt constructed wetland is it needs a managing because I believe this. I, there are members of Cobalt, they've been involved in this for a long time. They also believe it, but the ministry doesn't have blinders on. So, I mean, this has been So I continue to believe that it's scalable. And I believe it could reach benefit other small municipalities in Ontario with limited financial had to decide, okay. This is constructed I'd like to have the University of Toronto performance perspective. Basically, the Cobalt constructed wetland would be evaluated opposite other similar sized systems in Northern Ontario from an operational perspective as well as an environmental So I've contacted a former professor of mine at University of Toronto. So I went to University of Toronto many years ago. I contacted my professor that taught me wastewater treatment. And he's now the chair of the chemical engineering department. But he did tell me that he has a professor that very interested in doing this project for me. And he put me in touch. So I didn't, I didn't talk to him specifically about this project. It was just in concept because I couldn't mention client or the data or anything, but he put me in contact with a professor called Lodi Passiflora and she specialized in pipelines and water treatment. Am I here today? Similar I'm not even sure at this point whether this data or whether this study is at least we'll have it, they will know. I mean, I think, I think they'll get us but I suspect, so we have to have the facility capacity study complete by the end of October of this year. And then we'll have to design any modifications that are necessary. Don't have the time limit for the EC application, but expect they give us all in other years, probably by the end of 2024. So I hope that you have some
Who owns the design? Somebody owned the design of the wetland?
Who is paying for the city that they're doing?
At this point, we haven't At this point, we haven't talked terms of how much we don't so I haven't talked about I have I'm going to be a child of Congress.
And then there are other municipalities that have wetland treatment in Ontario. So it'd be interesting if they were actually to compare it with other wetland treatments. And are, how are we going to get the data from the other towns? If you have to come up to us for permission, are you going to have to ask them for permission?
No, it can be requested. But I think what they would I don't know for sure, but you can request all of that. But I will hope that what the municipalities would do to share that information, someone's neighbors who travels on board, they can write letters to
Are the other municipalities you're talking about in Ontario?
There, yes.
Maybe you think the same issue that
Well, there are no wetlands so your wetland is unique just from the perspective that we're doing all of this. So right now, other towns are using wetlands. It's only for polishing or tertiary treatment. So in Ontario, there's a law right now that requires that every municipality in Ontario be able to change secondary treatment with their treatments. And there's a list of technologies that are approved for secondary treatment. A constructed wetland. So I have been, but it needs to be, the irony of that is that to meet the requirements of secondary treatment, you have to meet those limits, 25, 25, 1.5 on an annual average basis. And this wetland does. But because it's not in the box, the ministry won't accept it. And so this is why I, I have been trying to influence the ministry for so many years that it's acceptable technology. And they just, I think they're hesitant to go that way because it's unknown, uncertain, and they don't want it to become overutilized, yeah, overutilized technology. But what I always press that stuff, but it maybe won't work. You had to discharge the effluent Cobal wetland into a special Charlotte it might not be suitable for that application, right? But there are many applications that could very likely they're just, they don't have policies or procedures in place yet properly evaluated.
Post, post-study with U of T, do you think that they would be inclined to write a letter that would support the system so that that may leverage the ministry to change their
For sure, assuming that study comes out, right? So you don't know right now. You don't know what the other I I'm hopeful that it will be what we believe should be based on what we know about wetlands. And it performs really well.
In other parts of Canada, like the Maritimes, are there wetlands like ours that are approved?
So in eastern Canada, there is a company that is providing designs and wetlands. But they tried to get into the Ontario Harvest 10 years ago that they it, they were just hitting a wall. I need your help. I gave up on it. We gave up on it a long time ago. But yes, there are wetlands and secondary treatment. Primarily use
What's the timeline on the study?
Have the, they haven't talked to they don't I really just very so I didn't even want to
Do you think there would be benefited in expanding the wetland? Do we just need more?
Do you think that another solve but all that I have with that is right now, it's coming so well. If anything, potentially we should that land still maybe we should and I don't have this past studies, so I'm thinking a lot, but maybe we should
Held over for another month.
The phosphorus is going to be the stick because
If we had the opportunity to grow, like someone who proposed a development with more houses, but then we need, like, it's working now, but how much more, and I know we're under the levels most of the time, but how much more can it treat? Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I haven't done that.
You've got a big project over the next few years where we're going to divert the sewage and the rainwater. So the rainwater won't, so that might increase our efficiency in the wetlands that the rainwater is not going into that.
Yeah.
Next few years.
That's a really good idea, though. Like you need to take that into consideration because we're being forced to do that.
But maybe that would be
I, I think
No, no, you go ahead. I'll remember.
Question that counts, Sir Anderson. Remember when you were talking about the wetlands at this stance that were kind of near the end of their life cycle, that it did some function?
Oh, remember, I said I had heard something about harvesting of the old ones.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
So in theory, there's some very, very minor potential improvements that could be harvested, but in practice, it's not, it's not done by anyone. It's just not financially marginal improvement. A lot of what takes place in a wetland actually occurs in the actual, so the cattails, so
So, so along those lines, if we do end up diverting the rainwater, which actually causes a higher concentration, which throws our numbers off. Is this solution to pollution dilution? Do we then have to add water in? And could that be a solution to our problem? Let's just, you don't even have to process it, take it from the lake and dilute it?
No, I think what so much less to the wetland, the wetland and I haven't done the calculation. Speculating. But I do we should look at it for sure.
Any other questions? One favor of moving.
We should probably end the agenda and
Is there anything further?
Great idea. In the, the other room there, I think.
Thank you, Maria. Yeah, you're free to go.
We're the one.
Thank you.
Sign it, set up.
Number five. Approval amendment of the meeting agenda, draft motion to be resolved, council approve the agenda of the regular meeting dated February 21st, 2023, as presented and amended. Just
I would, in, in view of Maria's point that she's going to be in Toronto, the week of March 5th. Get permission to use it. We have to do it tight. So I did take the liberty of writing up a motion there that we could add under new business, item 10. And also I had a request from councillor Cooper to present a request council under new business as well.
Or what was that second thing you got?
A request from councillor Cooper.
Okay, can I get a mover on the approval amendment? Doug and seconded by Pat. Any discussion? All in favor? Six approval of previous councilments, special meeting of council, January 17th, 2023, regular meeting of council, January 17th, 2023, special meeting of council, January 25th, 2023, special meeting of council, January 30th, 2023, maybe the whole meeting, February 7th, 2023, special meeting of council, February 15th, 2023, be resolved, council approve the following minutes as presented. Can I get a move on that? Seconded by Doug. Discussion. All in favor? Very. 7.1, 2022, the statement of our remuneration, draft motion to be resolved, the annual statement of secret emerging in expenses for council members who submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. Can I get a move on that, please? Jim, seconded by Harry. Any discussion? All in favor? Very. 7.2, application form for boards and committees. Draft motion to be resolved, the town of Cobal, the dot the application for boards and committees forum and is presented to be used for all boards and committees council. Can I get a mover? Angela, seconded by Doug. Any discussion? All in favor? Very. 7.3, family day, view resolved, council approve the 2020 family day activities of your ring as per schedule of events presented by Gibson. Can I get a mover on that, please? Doug. Seconded by Gary. Question?
We, is it just because it's officially town? Like last year it wasn't
Favor. Oh, sorry, Pat.
On the other hand, this should have been passed through our last meeting.
It should have
Because we had that special meeting and it could have been added in there. That would have been much better.
Any insurance issues we should know about before we vote for it?
Smooth sailing. We got about 300 people show up without a hiccup. Wonderful. All in favor? Harry. I just for council information, councillor Anderson, trans it up.
Yes, yes. I'll read you the news release from Tomisping Transit. Tomisping Transit is excited to announce Voyago will commence transit operations effective February 21st, 2023. Transit fleet is fully functional and the Voyago team is ready to serve Indy. Week one will be an overall transition to Voyago operations with the goal of full service by the end of the month. I think, believe the buses are running anyway.
Yeah, one bus that ran today. Yeah, it's seconded tomorrow.
Okay.
Were they, are they getting back to full?
Yeah.
Sorry, the modified schedule?
Modified. Yeah.
Every hour or two hours?
Um, in the, the one, the one thing that will be changed once we get going is the timing of the buses. We're going to hourly service, staying an hourly service for eight hours. In the middle of the day, it will be every two hour service. And I've already had a letter from one of our local people asking about, you know, have we gone with this all rest? But we have been looking at that change for the past two years anyway. All the buses are computerized now. At every stop, we know how many people got on. Um, you know, and the timing, everything. So we can read the whole thing and the periods during the middle of the day, there's very, very few people using it as opposed to the peak times. So that's why we're going to the middle of the day as a cost savings for only every other hour running. And okay, yeah, so that's why we've done that. We've been discussing that in the board before for at least two years and watching as the data came in, wanted to wait until after COVID was over. And then, you know, like a full year, a year and a half, much more normal service or much more normal usage as people go back to work and everything. And this is going to be quite a cost savings for us.
Could you tell me what the hourly peak zones are?
Ten, yeah, 10 o'clock is the last one. All gone, Neil. It's the 10.
There's going to be the one bus that runs 6 o'clock Cobal every two hours in Cobal right up until 8 o'clock this week. Okay, and then there's going to be what they plan on doing, having a second bus between 7:00 AM and 10:00 AM. All right, so it doesn't, so you're going to have a bus every hour just morning, part of the morning, and then it's going to come back on at say 3 o'clock, the second bus, right till 11. And that's eventually, tomorrow's going to be a little bit different. I'm not sure exactly how it's going to work. They're kind of like phasing it in kind of thing. So it's going to take a few days, but next week there's going to be the two buses, but seven o'clock bus that starts in Cobalt will be periodic. So a shift in the morning, a shift later in the day, like two years, kind of.
Plans from now on or will it?
Yeah. No, from now on, yeah. Yeah. We're looking at whatever cost savings we can make. You know, it's nice, it would be nice. We had a bus running every fifteen minutes for people, but you, you have to realize and you will realize when the budget finally comes out and we get all the numbers. Um, how much that bus service costs the taxpayers as a whole, that the amount we raise through the tickets, the bus pass is a third of what it actually costs for every person getting on the bus. So if we were, if we were to recover full costs for the service from the people that are using it, uh, we'd be looking at trying to sell them bus tickets for ten dollars each way. Ten dollars there, ten dollars back, you know, that kind of thing. It's, it's very, very expensive. So we're trying for whatever cost savings we can find without inconvenience, inconvenience.
There's also another point I want to make that, uh, between, I think it's February twenty seventh and March twenty fourth, there's going to be a period of service being two dollars.
Yeah.
Arrive for just to show its appreciation towards writers for putting up, maybe putting up with, right? And then, and then the hassle is get a free, free month. They have to call Tomisping Transit and get a free pass to the whole month.
If they have bought a pass in either January or February, because a lot of them did buy their passes in, uh, for January. You know, not knowing how long that, uh, lack of service was going to be and everything. So they will get a free month's pass.
Do we have a number yet on what the fare will be? Uh, goes back to normal?
Fares are going to stay, uh, as they were for now. Uh, we figured we didn't want to make too many changes there. We'll take a look. That would, it'll give us, um, you know, several months to see just how much it's going to cost us now. Because with Voyago, um, you know, it's a, it's a different contract. Um, it's certainly a lot less than what Doc was offering us in, in money and costs. Yeah. So we will get the totals and everything and then, and then we will be looking at bus fares, but we just. We raised bus fares a year ago or so, or a little over a year ago. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to move too fast. It's not fair to the, with every, all the prices and everything else going up. People that are mostly using the bus service are the ones can't afford a car. And, you know, are not making a lot of money. So we, we weren't trying to keep things as even as we can. Get, get, get the world, get our little world here past this big bump in, in pricing increases.
Nobody likes change, but sometimes could get all the change down in one day.
Yeah. Yeah, whereas we're going to phase them in. But we keep looking at it and discussing it and we don't make any move on any of that without, um, without the, the computerized figures that we're getting back. Like over the last, well, four years I was on, on the transit from the last administration. I think in three spots, three places, we made, um, slight group changes just because of that, it's computerization. We're able to say, oh, these people are coming from over here. This is better to go just down this street like that than straight like that. So, um, all those things I did, the, uh, the, the Mitch that looks after transit at Tomisping Shores. That guy, that guy worked so hard doing that, but he, it's, it's a computerization in the new buses. We've been able to do it before that, when we were just using the older buses without computers. Uh, all you could go by was the number of tickets and the number, the amount of money in the box. So now we're, everything is getting more, we've got, they've got computer apps. So you can go on your phone then and find out exactly where the bus is or exactly what time it's going to show up where you need it. So getting better and better. But good news there.
Did you resolve the council accept the items for consideration and information as presented? Can I get a mover on that? Jim, seconded by Doug. All in favor? Eric. Eight, bylaws and agreements, eighty point one, bylaw number twenty twenty three dash zero five interim tax levy. Be resolved at bylaw number twenty twenty three dash zero five, being a bit violent for adopt interim tax levy for the corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as ready first, second and third time in past this twentieth, twenty first day of February, twenty twenty three. Further that is said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Can I get a mover on that? Jim, seconded by Doug. Any further discussion? All in favor? Eric. Eight point two, bylaw number twenty twenty three dash zero six amendment to accounts receivable policy. Be resolved at the bylaw number twenty twenty three dash zero six to adopt amendment number one, bylaw twenty fourteen dash forty eight, house receivable policy to remove collection of rental arrears be taken as red first, second and third time in past this twenty first day of February, twenty twenty three. And further that said by law and signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Can I get a mover on that, please? Gary, seconded by Pat. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Eric. Eight point three, by, by law number twenty twenty three dash zero seven, being a bylaw to establish a public library. Be resolved at bylaw number twenty twenty three dash zero seven, being a bylaw to put library taken as red, first, second and third time in past this twenty first day of February, twenty twenty three. And further that is said by law be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Can I get a mover on that? Gary, seconded by Doug. Discuss on that? All in favor? Eric.
No, I thought you had discussion points that you wanted to bring up. No, we're. Okay.
Okay, sorry. Did you have a question, Jim?
Steve heard it. I was asked.
Let me see his hands. Just to confirm again. Eric, thank you. Nine unfinished business. Ten, new business, schedule of accounts?
Can you do the?
Yeah, I have a standard point two.
And I was looking at, um, our legal charges and they're beginning to worry me a little bit. We're up to, where are we at? The ten thousand just last month. And, uh, about thirty thousand down there at the end of the month. They're, they're piling up. I know, I know we had the contract for the training and everything. And because there's so many new, we definitely needed the extended training, but it seems like after the, met with the library and they're added a pile more of legal charges on and how many more are going on? And, you know, like thirty thousand dollars so far. There's, there's half of that new vehicle that the guys need down at Town Rock.
Pages up and on that.
Yeah.
It's five thousand nine hundred.
Is there a breakdown? It's five nine seven.
Yeah, there's total.
Doug?
I, I tend to agree with Pat. It's a little bit alarming and I'm wondering if we should just put brakes on the training and everything else until we at least finish our budget and know where we're at.
How much of the training have we paid for? We haven't received a lot yet. How much have we?
But this isn't going with you, no, you committed.
Yeah, but that's not really, that's going to come out over the next year, kind of. We take part in the training.
Yeah, all that extra they showed us.
We haven't done a whole bunch. Actually, we've only done a couple of.
Yes, yeah. Got to rethink that.
Yeah, I was thinking this is a big bunch more yet to come. And maybe you want to.
We've been rebuilt or?
I, I'm spooked too. There's a lot of money.
Plus for the year.
For this part of the conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's, you know, there's a lot of extra charges on there and we thought of, how to make sure we're accessing them that it's something.
Place cultural.
Broadcast we decide as a, as a unit.
Eric?
Um, so, uh, I agree that it's a lot of cost. I also have a lot of concern that we don't have anywhere to go for advice. Even our last meeting, nobody had any idea how to run things. Again, information's put in front of us without any context uh, or background information that could have been presented a lot better. So we need to have a place to go for advice. So if it's not there, where do we go? Can we contract the one with
Contact or contact?
Experience contract, somebody with experience that could then give us advice on how to do things because we don't have that knowledge base here.
Who's doing the legal services for my brand? Is that our lawyer, Mr. Cassidy? Is that who we're paying? It's, it's on the, it's on the last page.
Two eighty four and two eighty five.
Library. Our matter. Seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand dollars there. But I'm just wondering, who's the lawyer? Is that the lawyer? We have. Who's doing, who's to pay this?
Permeas our lawyer.
Yeah.
If that's what he made.
Anytime we contact lawyers outside of the scope right now, uh, we will play an audit. It costs. I was in discussion with our municipal lawyer and moving forward, if we, if council decides to go for legal, it'll be council as a whole, and through myself, contact. That way.
He rates you in check.
Which are exactly what do they do? We share. What, what do they actually?
Our municipal lawyer. They also take care of municipal as well as, as the land or properties. So this is.
All kinds of.
Yeah.
Well, it's one of the.
You know.
They got lots of lawyers.
Yeah, they've got, they've got a ton in there specializing in different things. So, you know, we access them, um, they would then say, okay, he's, he's the one that's going to be your point man or she. Um, because that's their specialties. They do have a lot of specialties. They are, they are very good. Um, I'm very pleased with them since we contracted on four years ago. Yeah. It's just, these right now, we're like, you know, I'm worried about the budget.
We're learning and we're just starting.
Yeah, yeah.
Angela.
Well, I feel like we don't necessarily need a lawyer to train us on how we should be operating as a council. I don't know why the province doesn't have a more general training like other association do with the video, but I do think that we need more guidance. So if it's not from this expensive lawyer, then where can we get this guidance from somebody that we all trust and will listen to?
End up.
Remember either, yeah.
Did he really get any training?
One, I'm going to bring up, so I was in contact with the mayor from today. We spoke about exact issues. New councils being put into office. Just there being no easy way to get. Basically, you're thrown in for a crime. So, um, that's something I think that they're on and hopefully you know, we have that need to better trainings for municipal side of things.
Sure you guys, I'll get the emails for AMO, stop all day long. They have lots of course, but they're like two fifty, five hundred, six hundred, two fifty. But they, they offer a course just about everything you can think of for two or three hundred dollars.
It's been ten thousand.
All of us have to take the same course. Five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred, five hundred. That's twenty one course. But I, I'm not paying for it anyways.
A lot of the other years. Read your handbook, you know, in a municipal, in a municipal laws, all the rest is average for that. That's what they're regurgitating a lot to.
And I think Stephen's point that if council debates, if council decides to go seek a legal, that will tend to cost now. And at that point, we discover if we will, you know, this course.
Okay.
Go to Google.
Eight point two. Google it.
We got the motion for the schedule to vote on it.
Oh. That up. I get a motion for special schedule. It's great. Yes.
Financial first.
Okay, sorry. Apologies. Pre result council received the following schedules as presented, schedule number twenty twenty three dash zero two in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and sixty six cents. Schedule number twenty twenty three dash zero three in the amount of a hundred and eleven dollars, six hundred and thirty six dollars and thirteen cents. I got a mover on that, please. Gary, seconded by Angela. Discussion, let's go.
This is probably a good time to bring up Harry's quest. He's basically looking for further information on some of the items in the schedule. Uh, item nine nine six six engineering services. Uh, one zero zero one seven, one zero three four, one zero three. Uh, he's asking for one year report, all invoice and eight. And that for a balance sheet for Tech Park stating all funding and expenses today with the balance remaining because I'm happy to send it. The question he had earlier about what to do with that. And we have to do it by the end of March. So uh, I think it's kind of giving us a push to get on with that and make decisions. I had the same thing with our previous one. Uh, there were invoice items for the owners, bank, coronator, had a portable pH meter. And he'd like an explanation of why those purchase, who approved the purchases, where the old coronator went as this unit was fairly new and can probably be repaired and kept to the spare. And he notes, we have to remember that everything is property of the town of Cobalt and we should have the option of keeping used equipment and deciding what to do with it. So I don't know how you want to handle that. Harry can't be with us tonight. He interests him.
But he's looking for a staff or a hose?
Yes.
Does it, sorry, does it have to be a staff report or can he just call and see for clarification? And then if, if a staff report, like further investigation is actually needed, then we can bring it up because I think he might be able to get a lot of that clarified. And then if we want a staff report, is it just because one person wants it or do we have to agree as council that it's worth their staff's time to write a report? I'm not in disagreement. I just, I don't. We don't all know.
Yes.
Steve could maybe nail it all. Two minute conversation.
No, I don't want you to write a report. I'm just hoping you can have a phone. Oh.
My report.
You don't think you can just, it would be faster in a phone call or you're going to have to see? Whatever you think. I'm just trying to be efficient, Steve.
Charles, she asked. Current tenant. Okay.
Okay.
I hate to go back to the full transparency and everything argument, but, uh, I, I, I think Harry has some basis for making these questions. So it might be of benefit for all of us to see, uh, what it does mean. And, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be critical of something, but maybe it'll help remind us of. what it does mean. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be critical of something, but maybe it'll help remind us of what limits are and who's doing what and why. I think it's a good information source for us on a first time basis.
I have a photocopy six or seven of those.
You can proceed in order. Yes. No. Point two here. Hold on. Yeah. So can I get a mover in a second or on the motion, Harry, getting the staff for Jim? Seconded by Doug. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Very. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Oh, the motion for environmental. Doug, I can just hear on that. Our disturbing environmental, you share any necessary information regarding the Cobalt wetland with University of Toronto to allow the university to conduct a research project comparing the Cobalt constructed wetland to Northern Sioux treatment systems similar size from an operational and environmental perspective. Any further discussion? All in favor? Very. Yeah, we need a vote on the schedule. All in favor of the schedule? Very.
Yeah.
Spin. Eleven, what was meeting? None?
Just before we go on, just add one more thing that you guys wouldn't know about. We had had just before COVID. Graham Gambles and his group that have worked on a lot of the heritage sites and stuff like that had made arrangements down at the university well for those students to do a study and drill down into underneath this main street. Well, underneath these buildings and take a look at the water and everything down there, the temperature of the water. Doing the studies for, using geothermal heating. So we got to get a hold of those guys to find out who their contacts were and hopefully get that one going again. Cause that was another project like this that they would have come in and done the drilling at no expense to us and carried through an awful lot of the startup. Graham Gambles.
University of wealth.
Yeah, University of wealth was who we had contacted.
Don't remember the.
And I didn't get to come into somewhere unfortunately.
Should have that in record.
So that should be in their records before because.
Yes, it was a really nice project.
Oh, great, yeah.
Heating in the wintertime and cooling in the summertime from an underground water source.
And it's kind of a system. Yeah. And a ton of that, all the studies and everything ahead of time would have been done across us. And, and then led us into the, the grants to actually do it because before COVID, the the technology had come up so far that we could, we could use our water temperatures here for that. Whereas when he first proposed it back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, somewhere around in there, we were you know, just a little bit warmer, but it wouldn't have been efficient. So now the technology is more efficient.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
Great for all the, and that would be for every municipal building right down the street.
Thank you. Twelve, the disarising.
Price of drilling though is very expensive for each of those buildings.
That's wealth university.
Well, they drill one test hole, but then every other building would need its own.
No, oh, you'd just be putting in one plant down there.
Angela?
Wait till we get to our natural gas pricing. We might, we might be in jump net opportunity.
Okay, thirteen confirmation by law draft motion be resolved at the bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash sure wait being a bylaw, bylaw to confirm the proceeding of the council of the corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as red a first, second, and third time and passed this twenty-first day of February twenty twenty-three. And further that, the said bylaw be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Can I get a mover please? Uh, seconded by Pat. Any discussion on that?
I'm not familiar with this one. I haven't read this yet. I haven't read it at all, so.
Oh, that one, that's standard at the end of every, at the end of every meeting. As I said, everything we did and talked about is entered in.
Good drinker? Fourteen, adjournment, draft motion be resolved at the regular meeting of council. All in favor? Adjournment, draft motion be resolved at the regular meeting of council be adjourned at seven forty-five? Mover, uh, seconded by Jim. All in favor? Very.